Moving on to the Cold War Veterans Exemption. Ryan again.
There's gonna be no action to take on that tonight. It has taken a backseat for the other local laws we've been doing, but I will dig into that.
If you don't find anything adverse for us, I think we should just move ahead with it.
What would be adverse here? I mean, it will cost the town money.
Yes, but there's no other hidden factors to it.
I will look into that, but basically it's giving people a tax break, so the towns will get less tax money from certain property owners.
And who determines the time limit on that? Is it a law that's...
The law was in place for a long time, and actually, we never put it into place because we didn't have town tax, so there was no point. Recently, the state legislature allowed municipalities to extend it, so it was going to expire. Municipalities have been allowed to extend it, so basically what we're doing is we're not extending it. We're creating it and doing it for the next time. I don't recall what the time period is in the law. I want to say it's five or 10 years, but I can report to the board on that.
The county has participated already, I believe, from what I was told.
I believe that is correct.
The school board, I believe, decided not to.
That is my understanding as well.
Okay. Okay, the bid on the fire hydrant tonight, but from what I understand from Mr. Lanning, due to bureaucracy, there's nothing really to report on that. Coordinating the insurance and the reporting requirements of the current board. Site plan application, East Corner Riverwalk Drive at Wolf Run, Morial.
I've got nothing on that.
And it's actually...
I think that could get taken off the agenda. I spoke with Bill Time from Copfors Capretto. It was my position that while they filed, they called a site plan application, it was not actually a site plan application because there was no buildings, there was nothing to review. He was looking to take, I guess, another action, and I suggested he take a different route to do that, or go through the regular process to do that.
Okay, so it'll be no action taken, be removed from the agenda. Rezone request, Alka Realty, Northridge Drive, SBL correction.
So, the SBL correction, I guess, that was because when I initially drafted the law to take one of the SPLs out, that property had been taken, I believe, as part of eminent domain proceedings. It's a road now. So, to the extent that it says SBL correction, that's just because I presented you with one law, then later on, I realized that that lot, that SBL number, didn't exist, so I changed it to delete that. What we're looking for tonight is to introduce the law and to set it for a preliminary hearing on January 8th. I did look... I'm sorry. A public hearing on January 8th. No problem. And we can do our organization meeting that night as well.
Mr. Supervisor.
Go ahead. There actually was a typo in the planning board's document to you guys originally. There was a... When Sandy typed it up and said 101.12 to 102.12, and it listed the 20 lots, she mistakenly put 102, and it should have read 101. And that should be in your packet to make that correction. The 2 should have been a 1.
Just to clarify, it's, and that was just a typographical error.
Correct.
We're still all talking about the same lots there on Northridge.
Yep.
Mr. Supervisor, since it was mentioned in the newspaper that this was going to be a public information on this, would you take a moment and ask if anybody has additional input? If I wanted to say something?
We're scheduled for a public hearing now.
And it said in the paper that this was a semi, just information meeting, in case somebody came to speak here. I don't see anybody here that might speak that has not spoken before, but I want to make sure they have an opportunity to discuss something.
Did anybody come to speak in regards to that matter here tonight? Okay, then we'll...
Yeah.
And what we'll do is we'll schedule a public hearing on January the 8th in our Town Board Work Session 2018 at 6:00 PM. So, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, do we need to address a typo?
I would... Yes, because it said 101.12 through 102.12, and the lots were just a dash, and it should have... The last one shouldn't have been 102, should have been 101.12 also.
So, 101.12 to 101.12?
Yeah, like it... When she wrote the document to the town board, she said the 20 lots, but she didn't write them out consecutively. She said 101.12 dash such and such, such and such, through 102 point, and it should have been 101, not 102.
Okay, I see. And we have the list here, so it's actually lot 101.12 dash 1 dash 21 through lot 101 dot 12 dash 1 dash 41.
Correct.
Okay.
But did you want to eliminate 37?
Yes. 37 does not exist.
So, we call for a public hearing?
Yes.
And we don't have to direct the attorney to read the law, he's already written it?
The law's been directed, it's been introduced, and the public hearing on the 8th.
Okay.
It was all...
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that, or we just did a...
We need a motion of a public hearing. Police car purchase. Chief, Councilman Backs, can you give us some background on the purchase of the police car?
Will we see you again?
Yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting, originally in our schedule. As I explained with the board, we need to... Unfortunately, I was kind of left with a problem where three were purchased in one year at one point. This catches us back up to that, aside from the fact that the cars that I need to replace have 114, 117,000 miles on them. The repairs on them, I also have projected repairs. I haven't fixed them totally. We effectively fixed the major parts, but the coils and stuff are going, and you're just not safe at 117,000 miles at this point. Again, it's just getting to be... They're a money pit. I just keep putting money in, so...
So, as far as a motion is concerned tonight, do we have, you know, spectrum, or are we authorized on it? To add to that, I reached out, obviously, I called out Councilman Morial that night because his expertise is vehicles, and we spoke the next day, and we spoke to the chief. The chief, we got the chief involved with Marty, and with the funding, and what we've decided, correct me if I'm wrong, is we were going to purchase a new patrol car using H97 funds for public safety, and then the balance... And then, the balance of funds that were left over that he wanted to utilize for, were going to basically be rolled into the B fund, fund balance. Correct, Marty?
Yeah, well, he's not going to use the... What he's got in his budget in personnel, if that, any budget that's left gets rolled over in the fund balance.
In the fund balance.
Same consequence one way or the other.
Right.
So, for a new car using the state bids and use the H97...
Trade-in.
Do you have first down in the... Call the system, Mr. Grant, too?
No.
But we need new bikes.
You're in the budget for January, for 2018.
Okay, so try again.
So, I have to use the H97 funds to purchase a new police car, a 2017 police vehicle under the state specifications.
Correct.
And any money left over in your budget, as per normal policy, will be rolled over to the general...
Right, I had the money originally in the payroll, but it's going to help for the budget reasons to use someone else, and that'll just roll over, so...
That's a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And you said you're going to get $7,000 for the old car that's...
Well, Rob told me on the 8th.
Yeah, I could try to get... I'm going to try to get... But yes, the... When I asked him for the trade-in value, he gave me the same trade-in value as the one that we'd already were replacing. It's got the rear end that's going, so it was 7,000, some change, 7,200, I think, is what he gave us as a trade-in. He said it'll be the same because it has approximately the same miles on it.
The Brick payment, status update.
Donna, has there been any...
We had a meeting, Councilman Morris, I apologize. Councilman Morial, myself, two members of the Water Department, and Jason Brick had a meeting. We went over the parameters of how the work was done, who hired Mr. Brick, why they were hired, the town's involvement, and what we came up with, and it's Robin ours, mine opinion, along with the Water Department, that this is not something that the town's responsible for.
Very good.
So, we move it from the...
Yes, please. I just like to... I appreciate your efforts in giving Mr. Brick an opportunity to be our license result and some parole.
Yes. And then, the memorandum of agreement, purchase of used paper. I know, I talked to Ryan today, there's still legal legalities that still need to be figured out amongst the towns, correct?
Yeah, we're currently in discussions with attorneys from the other towns who just hired us, and a little reason...
Dave, I spoke to Dave Train earlier, he's aware. He apologized for not being here, but with the snow, he wanted to be out on the roads. So, there'll be no action taken on the purchase of the used paper. Erie County SPCA agreement.
It's the same thing. I reviewed it. I believe that there were some issues there, some language I want to clear up with the SPCA.
Right.
Those have been presented to the SPCA. Hopefully, we'll have changes made and be able to present to the board at the next meeting.
And just to let everybody know, that's basically, if we have the dogs, if we obtain a dog that's loose, we can't find an owner, I believe it's after five days, the Erie County SPCA has a policy where they will take the dog for $30, and they are a non-kill shelter, so they'll either be for adoption, or the rightful owner will be located and sent to the Erie County SPCA. So, that's the... There's just some technicalities with that agreement. Resolution correction, family medical leave, paid leave.
Just a clarification of the resolution that was passed at the last meeting. There may have been concern that no benefits whatsoever in regard to family leave were being offered. That's not the case. The same family leave benefits that were in place before are still in place. It's just that the town won't be offering paid family leave benefits as passed recently by the New York State Legislature.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the resolutions corrected?
So moved.
I can't second. I can do a stand. Okay. Second. So, we have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Need a sworn extension. The town standards for curbing of Atlanta, and I understand that there's some codes that need to be worked out with that.
That's correct. That continues to be a work in progress, there could be a potential parking issue with the vertical curbs, which points was a part of our inspector, so I'm trying to sort of, I mean, we tend to further clarify that issue.
Okay. Also, let's move on to Lime Energy, Morial.
Yeah, this is a continuation, and it needs a board approval on two line items. Lime Energy, Tim and I have been working with the gentleman. They're a representative company for National Grid to do all the lights, and when we did the original proposal, we kind of left out a couple, the outside lights, the lights back here, and a room downstairs that has to be done. To finish the town hall, in which all the lights would be, the estimated cost is $1,451. National Grid is contributing 80% of how, went up from the 60%, so the actual cost to finish the town hall is $286.45. And the senior center, the fixtures in the senior center, actual whole fixture, now when they do this, they just replace the bulbs and the bells. They're going to put all new fixtures in the senior center, add an 80% savings to the town. So, he gave us a quote for $17,000, $88,18 to do the complete job at the senior center. This will be all new light fixtures, bulbs, 25-year bulbs. They're going to contribute $11,487.8, 80% of the cost, and that's with prevailing rage. You know, cost of the town is going to be $3,338.33. So, these two billings will be completely done. The town hall's done, and the police station chief has also done it.
Yes, they considered it last week.
Yeah. So, I'd like the board approval to finish up the two billings with the cost that I had just proposed. Would you like to make that motion?
And this would come out of the hydro money?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
And authorize the supervisor to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to commend Councilman Morial for, and Tim Astor's, for working on this project, and that was... This came about through a separate meeting we learned about, correct? It just kind of...
That was nice.
Oh, yeah. Excellent. Very good. New business. Director of Finance, I want to read a letter that Marty submitted. Everybody has a copy. It says, "Dear Board Members and Resident List in New York, effective March 1st, 2018, I will be resigning my position of Director of Finance. This should give you plenty of time to find a qualified replacement. I had had a challenging and rewarding three years with the town, but it is now time for me to spend more time with my family. However, I am asking the board for an opportunity to train my replacement thoroughly, and I don't want the town to listen and go through the transitions of the past. I'm asking for the chance to work an average of 20 hours per week through the year of 2018 to teach my replacement all the intricacies of the position. This will get us through the budget season and year-end closing. The job is extremely complicated and is intimately involved with all departments of the town. We have worked hard to improve the financial health of the town, and I am asking for permission to see that the good health continue long into the future. Sincerely, Martha Plaza." I...
Thank you. Go ahead. Move to accept the resignation of Martha Marty with regret, with extreme regret.
Second. We have a motion of a second. Any questions?
Are we also approving her to stay on? Is it part-time, or are we...
Well, that's going to be part of our budgetary issues.
Well, it's already been...
What account is that going to come out of Marty?
I put it in the budget.
It's already in the budget, so the budget's been approved for that, but...
It's sitting in contingency, and the only reason we haven't, didn't put it in is whether I will be an employee or as an independent contractor.
I guess my question's much more general than, are we just approving her resignation?
So, at this point, yes.
Very good. So, second. Would you like to also?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I want to thank Marty for all the hard work. I know I've been aware of this situation for a while now. I see how hard she works, how much hours she puts in. She's here late at night on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, almost every week. You drive by here, the light's on, and I appreciate everything she's done. And that negative rating, or negative outlook to a positive outlook, is 99.9% on Marty Blazek, so I appreciate that very much.
Ryan, what if we wouldn't have voted to let her go?
Well, it's going to be a gradual, we're going to be weaned from her. I mean, she's going to be here pretty much the whole entire year of 2018, so I appreciate Also, the public hearing for the extending the moratorium concerning disposal of sludge, sewage, and septicage. We need to schedule that?
Yes.
Okay, can we do that the same date, January 8th?
Yeah, I'll get the information to Ryan.
Okay, and we have the local law here already, right?
Yes, local law's already there.
We have a motion to set a public hearing for the extension of the moratorium concerning disposal of sludge, sewage, and septicage for January 8th, 2018 at 6:15 PM.
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I apologize. I just want to interject that basically what's happening is there's a decision out there, a lawsuit that's going to affect the text, and ultimately, what the text of this law can and cannot do. It's currently, it's weak field. I did actually speak with the attorney who was handling that matter and all the accounting today. He indicated that. They argued it last month, and they're still awaiting a decision.
Okay. They expect one soon?
He kind of said hopefully, but you never know.
No way to say.
The court's going to rule.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. The 2018 Sewer Use Annual Agreement.
This is a standard agreement that gets executed every year. There's been no change other than what proceeds updated with respect to the figures, so I make a motion that the supervisor be authorized to sign the 2018 Sewer Use Annual Agreement. Just to clarify, I didn't update the figures, I updated the language, so it is basically the same agreement, I just cleaned it up, reviewed it. I can approve it as to content of the numbers come from.
Okay, I apologize.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, I've got a request for, from the county, which I think Mr. Ritter had provided us with information, the last meeting that I had attended, which was that the county provides us with $20,000 each year with respect to the pipe crawling camera fund, so I'd like to make a motion that the town requests that from the county, just for payment for that service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And this is the last payment on that, right? So, next year, we got to come up with a different INI project. We have, we got plenty of those.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need to clarify the dollar amount for that? I mean, we're requesting $20,000 from the county.
We're requesting $20,000. There's $17,000 and some change left to pay off the camera. There's another piece of paper that should have followed with that request, which shows other work that we've done in the ancestry area that should encompass the rest of the funds.
Should it all be accounted for effectively with the information that's been provided?
Well over $20,000. Okay. Excellent.
The CWM lawsuit resolution. We'd like to make the following resolution. Whereas the Town of Lewiston Board seeks to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, and whereas the Town of Lewiston has long opposed the commercial importation of PCBs and hazardous waste for treatment, storage, and disposal activities in Lewiston, the Lewiston Porter community near schools, farms, and homes, and whereas the Town of Lewiston has long opposed the commercial transportation of PCBs and hazardous waste through the Lewiston Porter community and past all public schools, and where the commercial transportation of PCBs and hazardous waste for disposal in communities in the community ceased in November of 2015, and the associated landfill was certified as closed in June of 2017 by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and whereas the Village of Lewiston, the Town of Lewiston, the Village of Youngstown, Niagara County, the Lewiston Porter Central School District, the Niagara County Farm Bureau, and Residents for Responsible Government Incorporated were intervenors in state regulatory proceedings in opposition to an application to cite a massive new PCB and hazardous waste landfill in the community, and whereas a petition and complaint was filed by area residents on October 19th, 2017, and Erie County Supreme Court prevents any impermissible commercial PCB and hazardous waste treatment and storage activity in the community. Be it resolved that the Town of Lewiston wishes to file papers with the court to participate in support of the residents' petition, in such form and substance deemed appropriate by Councilman Backs in consultation with the council and the Town of Lewiston. Be it further resolved that no expense shall be incurred by the Town of Lewiston in advance of approval by a meeting of the Lewiston Town Board, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the above names intervenors. And I say move. Councilman Backs, I would just amend that to just state that the particular matter that it is, it is Wichreall versus CWM, that is the actual matter that we're talking about here. So, I'll amend that. Whereas the petition complaint was filed by area residents on October 19th, 2017, Wichreall versus the Department of Environmental Conservation.
That's the name of the action, correct?
Well, it depends on what you mean by the, all of the parties to suit. It's a, it's a very long list.
So, Wichreall and all.
And CWM and all.
And CWM and all.
CWM, the DEC, and all. And the Police Management and all. I mean, it's a long list.
Just so it's clear, what lawsuit we're talking about is what I'm trying to clarify, and I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, unless there's any other Lewiston Porter residents who filed the case in Erie County Supreme Court on October 19th, I think you're, I think you're okay.
But it wouldn't involve you yet, so...
Wichreall and all versus CWM.
CWM and all.
So moved. We have a motion of a second. And a second. Any questions? The only thing I would like to add, our attorney in the matter, Gary Abraham, is in 100% support of this resolution, so with having said that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
You know, I raised my hand, and out of courtesy, I would have liked to have been heard. I know it's not proper.
I didn't see your hand. I apologize.
Mr. Backs, could you read that part about the finance again, please, at the end?
Be it further resolved that no expense shall be incurred by the Town of Lewiston in advance of approval by a meeting of the Lewiston Town Board?
What does that mean? In advance of, but after you approve the resolution, it leaves it open?
No. It'd be no cost to the Town of Lewiston.
Unless we vote for it.
Separately from tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Personnel carryover request. We have a letter from Donna Garfinkel, dated December 6th, a carryover. Please allow Tamara Miegrose to carry over one personal day to be used within the first quarter of 2018, and this is according to our policies and procedures in the...
You're for approval as it reflects the policy.
We have a motion of second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And the court audit. To Town Supervisor and Board Members, we have been told by David F. Porter, OCA, that we must open our books to the Town Board for review, which we already have pursuant to Section 2019-A of the Uniform Justice Court Act. It is the duty of every justice to present our records and docket at least once a year to the auditing board of the town, which will examine said record or docket where cause seemed to be examined and enter in the minutes of its proceedings the fact that they have been duly examined. Consistent with Section 2019-A of the Uniform Justice Court Act, we hereby advise that the court's records and docket are available to be presented for such examination. We look forward to working with you to schedule such examination in an expedient manner. So, I don't believe any action has to be taken on it, this has to be introduced. Yes, it's just another comment. Okay, and that is all I have for tonight's work session. We will move to the privilege of the floor.
A couple things. One, I wish you would acknowledge when students are here from the schools, because I think it would be kind of polite on your part, you know? They are putting in their time, and a lot of them also don't realize when they should come up and sign, have you sign. I would like to sign for them, and then they can leave after the exact discussion, but I... I find a room a little friendlier for the residents. I like this, rather than this, you don't have your back to us, and this type of thing. I do quite a bit of siren prayers. Now, a siren prayer to me, and I write this on a lot of letters I write on the back, it should be, we are going to pray, a siren prayer. Every time you hear a siren, you're going to pray for, first, the people where they're going, because it's got to be an emergency, and two, safety as they travel there. That would be first responders of any kind. Okay, the other thing, you know, I've been around government for probably 50 years. I see a trend happening that I think you should become aware of. It's when a person is hired for a specific job, specific salary, then they began to expand that out a little bit. They began to have maybe an idea. I call it niche. They began to expand that out a little bit, so suddenly, they want more money, or they want extra help, so you suddenly then have to spend more taxpayers' money for that. So, kind of think about that as you see this happening, and this isn't only this body that it might happen to, but other government bodies. Now, I did write to Jeffrey Mizula, remember, he's the executive director of the Controller in Buffalo, and he keeps all my mail. Now, I did write to him, I sent him a couple pages of concerns of mine. One, too many transfers. Too many transfers. And also, then this is what they should look at when they audit the next time. I call it creative accounting, and I think this also, you're setting a bad precedent in a way, too. in a way, too. When you have the email, now I don't know if the email is like executive session type, or whether the email should be on your website for the agenda. I don't know how private that is, this email. But anyway, I just thought, it doesn't sound too transparent to me. So just kind of think of that. One, the niche of people expanding their job, it may be a very good idea, but not that year. It's gotta be put into that budget, and you've got to, as I said, well, I call it a niche. They're building a niche, and I think you'll know different departments that I think this is happening in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warren. Nancy Korea?
Yes, basedated?
Yes.
Oh, it doesn't work. It's not working.
You don't think so?
No.
Do I just have a big mouth? No. I resent that.
It's the new room.
I think it's.
Well, yeah. My statement before asking for clarification on the CNW issue, I've been asked by a couple of residents, neighbors, to speak in support of your action, but to clarify that they're not in support of adding any of the town's finances to help bring it to fruition. So in other words, because of the new taxes and new rates going up, we realize that the town is in a bind, and we don't want to see it progress any further. So take the lead from the village, offer your support as you did, but no money's allocated to fight the issue. Secondly, I want to commend Mr. Parisi. He gave a very clear, clear explanation of going into the executive session, that's the way it should be done. So thank you for following through on that. And secondly, I want to ask Mr. Guybin, has the equipment for the videoing been purchased? And is it here in the town hall?
I don't know if it's in the town hall. Professor Jim took it to synchronize it all, and he was trying for the eleventh or the twenty-eighth to have it installed on this wall over here. As I said last, two weeks ago, I was hoping to have it all done in January of seventeen, hopefully it'll be done by December of seventeen. We're getting close to the end. And then we have to start the next phase of having the educational element.
So it's not gonna be functioning until the education?
No, it should be functioning, but Professor Jim promised me December. I would've.
Just, just keep us posted.
Oh, I gotta say one more thing.
Nope.
I gotta say one more thing. It was about overspending the money on this room over what the grant was. See, I don't think that that should be done, because that's where I meant, you're setting a bad precedent on every time overspending. So it's kind of, you know, it's like being in my house. Nobody tells me, gee, Mrs. Warren, you always spend, so I think Taps is gonna let you buy your groceries free this week. I don't think so.
Well, we've been in construction process and we're proceeding.
Yeah, we approved it. I mean, it's been.
Well, what's behind the walls?
Steve Lyle? No, you're good. Okay. Amy Woodtrill, you came in late before, when I gathered the sign and sheet. It doesn't work. Just go ahead and speak. Yeah, we'll hear you.
All right. I didn't get an opportunity to chat with Nancy or any of her neighbors about the nature of this suit. But this isn't really an Amy Woodtrill suit, this is a public interest suit. And I wouldn't be bringing a lawsuit if it were not in the public interest. So I would encourage Nancy to get her neighbors together, all buy the coffee, and explain the cost to the town if we lose this suit. It would, it, it could easily take a year for any lawsuit to work its way through the system, and if there are appeals, et cetera, et cetera. But this is about seeing that the landfill that, that closed in two thousand and seventeen, as officially certified by D E C, remains so, and that the activities associated with the nineteen ninety-three approval for that also expire as intended by that approval. So Mrs. Soretto and everyone else in that neighborhood does not wake up five years from now with sixty thousand trucks a year potentially coming through the town of Lewiston for treatment or packaging in a facility near our schools, invented tanks, vented mixing pits. Some of the treatment facilities out there include an eight thousand gallon tank for cyanide, and these tanks must be vented to keep them from exploding. And of course, CWM will argue the engineering and the safety next year in adjudicatory hearings. We will also argue the economics, and I won't get into the weeds on the technical aspects of the economics, but when you have highly stigmatized facilities, and there are only ten of these left in the United States with respect to treatment, storage, and disposal, there is a cost to municipalities. And if there weren't, you don't have to be an economist to figure out, there aren't towns and counties coming out of the woodwork all over the United States trying to recruit one of these facilities to their towns. And certainly, there are towns that are really desperate and in desperate straits, and those aren't communities in depressed areas of the United States that are out there pleading for CWM to relocate to their town. So if it, if it's not important to residents to protect the health and safety of, of all the residents in the town, working as best we can to use all of our collective resources as, as efficiently as possible for the public good, and some individuals at great expense solely to benefit the public and not themselves, then I would ask people to also consider that there clearly is an economic benefit to the community and to our families who not only want to give our kids a good education, but hopefully have a thriving economy for them to come home to when they complete their education, so that they too can live and work and raise a family in the community. So thank you very much for your vote this evening. I appreciate it, but more importantly, I truly believe that, you know, this particular cause preventing the last spark out of that facility, a mile from our school property, from turning into an inferno five years from now, when as a matter of law, we wouldn't be able to do anything about it, was important enough to, to take this action, and I look forward to the town's participation in whatever manner you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah.
I stand by my previous statement. Thank you.
Okay. Announcements. Town offices will be closed Tuesday, December twenty-sixth for the Christmas holiday.
And Monday.
Right, 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 right. I would follow that up. And Monday, Christmas Day, the twenty-fifth. Will also be closed January first and January second. Correct?
Right.
Yes. Upcoming meetings, the Historic Preservation, December twelfth at six P.M. in the lunchroom. Environmental Commission, December twelfth at seven P.M. in the supervisor's office. Zoning Board, December fourteenth at seven P.M. Planning Board, December twenty-first at six thirty P.M. Final Audit, regular town board meeting, December twenty-eighth at six P.M. January eighth will be the six P.M. public hearing for the Masaro Project, and January eighth at six fifteen will be the public hearing for the sludge. I, I again will not be at the December twenty-eighth meeting, so this is my last opportunity to thank Councilwoman Bess Soretto for the time and effort she's put in to the town of Lewiston. This, this will be our last meeting together. It's been an honor and a privilege to spend time with you these last two years, and I wish you the best in, in your, your future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want to set the reorganization meeting?
Yeah, we, we had talked about, you found out January eighth does fit that?
It does, yes.
Okay. So January eighth at six P.M., our regular board meeting will hold the, after the two public hearings, we'll hold our reorganization meeting as well. So January eighth at roughly six thirty, I would say.
Ryan, if you have a chance, can you look over our agenda from the past? Because Ryan indicated that we're doing things that are not necessary at that reorganization. So approving all sorts of things that don't need to be done.
Sure, I'll, I'll take a look at that prior to meeting. Also, before we end, Councilman Mario wanted to correct something.